Welcome. Oh, I'll try that again, excuse me. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have present the entire board, plus Kip and Maureen and Suzanne. I think you're the only one observing and welcome. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Maureen.
Great, thank you. I'm delighted that you could all be together for this meeting. We're going to start with just a very quick review on my part of the guidelines that I had offered when we first met on September 13th. And then the first document that we'll review will be the Board Ethics, the Board Member Ethics Document, which is a separate document, and I have taken the content directly from the Wyoming Public Library Board Members Handbook, just for ease. So this is a time when you, together as the board, have the opportunity to participate, to share your ideas. As I said, on September 13th, it's important that you continue to listen to one another, to hear what each of you is actually making as a point or saying. That part of my responsibility as the facilitator in this work session is to help you identify where there are areas of difference and to work through them. One of the things that is going to be important in today's work is that we try to reach agreement, particularly on the Working Together Agreement Document. And as that conversation is proceeding, I will particularly be looking for places where there is agreement. We can confirm that, but also any areas of difference that we need to really work through. So before I have us turn our attention to the Board Ethics Statement, is there anything that anyone wants to say? Questions that you might have, comments you may want to make? And I am thinking that we will do a mid-session break. Three hours is a long time to expect people to sit together. So I'll be looking for a place where we can take a break after about an hour and 15 minutes or so. We're ready to go? So the purpose of this group in this session, looking at the Board Ethics Statement, is to give you an opportunity to say to one another, here are some places that are particularly important for us. Here are some questions that I might have, because the goal at the end of this is to be sure that all of you are ready to, and I think for most of you, if not all of you, it's to continue to follow these ethical statements. So let's take a few minutes, because I'm thinking some of you may have come from other things. Let's give a few minutes for you to review the document.
I guess I'd like to ask you a question, Maureen.
Sure.
You've observed us for five months now. And so as we go through this, it would be helpful from that arse-length observation for you to let us know where you see we may have issues, because it may not be as clear to some of us, for example, me, living in the weeds, where you might see those issues. So to the extent that you could help us, that would be great.
Okay.
Help me, that would be even better.
Okay. I'm highly motivated to be helpful to all of you. But I also think, Peter, while I can do that, and there's one area in particular where I'm prepared to do that, I think it will be important for you to do this work for one another. Because one of the most important responsibilities in any board is for each individual board member to be accountable for helping the board as a whole.
Can I add another question?
Sure.
When the time is right. Of confidentiality versus the public's right to know. This has always been a little bit gray as to what really is confidential. And I found in the Wyoming statutes, the definition of executive sessions, statute 16-4-405. And I'd just like to discuss if that really captures what is and isn't confidential for us, as guidelines for us. So when the time is right.
Okay. I don't know that I have access to that right now, even given all the paper I have here, but I'll check.
I can summarize it when the time comes if necessary.
Okay, great. And we probably do, I would propose, Grace, that we do want to have this conversation while we're looking at these ethical principles. So does anyone else have a question or a point you want to make? Because now I'm starting to think, maybe we should go through each of these in turn.
Yeah.
So the first one, public good over personal gain. Anyone have an issue with this, or a question, or think this is a problem area for the board? In my work with you, I've seen no evidence that this is an issue.
Yeah, the only person that I know of that has an active business that might even remotely get in the library space is Sean. And he has nothing to do with that at all, as far as I know. He has no financial gain of anything, I mean, from his IT business. Unless the library has some family member that's in Nias extended firm. No, none of us have businesses, I know.
And Sean, Peter was, in a way, speaking for you. Do you want to comment at all on that?
I apologize, I'm going to keep my mask on, because I've had a little tickle of it. No, I feel like I'm particularly sensitive to that. I don't feel like I would be running into any conflicts there. Actually, the other flip side of that is that I have books here in the library that I've written, and potentially would have one coming out during my tenure here. And I've given that some thought. I wouldn't want to use this position to try to benefit in any ways. That's something that's up front of my mind.
Great, thank you. So I'm assuming the group is good on this one? Okay, so the next one, the group's decision is paramount. Discussion on this.
I would think that this is the hardest one for us to deal with, because it's very hard to separate a person from the group. We have, one of the benefits and beauties of this board is the diversity of opinion and experience. And taking that collective viewpoint, and then coming to a decision, and being supportive of that decision. Because we do start with very disparate backgrounds and experiences and passions. I think we've, I think we have done poorly sometimes on this area, and I think we've done incredibly well sometimes in these areas, but not consistent. Both a year ago, when I came on the board, and five months, seven months ago, when Dale was off the board, and back when Dale came on the board, and now with Sean on the board. I think we've had a variety, and with my experience, I mean, I've been both good, bad, and indifferent on this too. So I think this is the toughest one for me to deal with, trying to separate my personal feelings from the group. But it's something I'm conscious of all the time. But working through that in the specifics are very difficult. I think as a board, we have been working pretty well together over the last four months. That's my group. And I think we've gotten better at respecting each other's viewpoint and coming to decisions. That's just from my perspective. I felt much more comfortable with that. I'm sure a lot of you, anybody else?
I'd just like to add that I think the challenge in this is when we haven't yet taken a vote or made a decision, and we're still in discussion about things, and, you know, making clear that it's a personal position, and that the board is working on it, or hasn't made a position known on that. I think the challenge in this is before a vote is taken. I think we all do pretty well with respecting a vote and following from there. But to me, it's challenging when we don't have a group decision, and it might be a subject that maybe we're not even voting on. But I guess, is it adequate to preface, or caveat, whatever we say or do, that this is my personal opinion? And is that all it takes as far as staying clean with this subject? Just prefacing it, or caveating it, that this is a personal opinion, not a board opinion? Is that enough?
That would certainly be helpful, because what this is really getting at is how important it is when you become a member of the board that you are acting in the best interest of the governance of the organization and as a board member. And you can express your personal point of view as you're suggesting, Grace, but you have to be very careful that when the board is deliberating and making a decision, that work is being done where the primary focus is on what's in the best interest of the organization. And that, in a way, aligns with the last one here on fulfilling board responsibilities. And I do think, as Peter has suggested, this one is often the most challenging, especially if you're new to the board, because it requires some self-discipline. And I think it also requires time and experience to reach a point where each of you can make that distinction and really become a full member of the board by acting, as I've already said, in the best interest of the organization. Other thoughts on this one?
Well, I guess, Maureen, I'd like to understand. You know, one of the purposes of this session is not only just that the board is currently seated, but the board that will be seated five years from now, or seven years from now. So I'd like to make sure that we're coming through with this session with what's extendable beyond any certain group of members that are sitting around the table, is the board. And how can we create as much of a structure that can survive any particular board that acts as a template that can be helpful to future boards? So it's less of going into the, where we've had problems in the rearview mirror, particularly that I've had, or whatever, although I'm happy to talk about them, that made a lot of mistakes. It's how can we prospectively go for, not only with this board configured, but in a way that's helpful to future boards? I don't know how much that's board-specific in terms of membership, or how much of it's generic.
So if you're posing that question to me, which I think you are, here's my answer. You commit on an ongoing basis to do a regular review of this statement of ethics and have the kind of work session that we're having here. And the first place where I would recommend that you do this is anytime there's a change in membership, you understand that this is a new group acting as the board for the Teton County Library, and you have a responsibility to engage in a board development session that includes a review of the ethics. And on an ongoing basis, each of you individually holds the responsibility to hold your colleagues accountable for acting in accordance with these ethical principles. And I think the State Library Agency has done a great service in putting these forward.
And generally speaking, in Wyoming, particularly with respected government boards, not appointed government boards so much as elected government boards, current boards can't bind future boards. So, you know, as a working rule of thumb, you know, one would hope that your board would come up with ideas that were good enough that would have some longevity. But I don't think there's any guarantee going forward that the next group might approach it from an entirely different way.
Well, we're trying to just look towards best practices and presumably if we're going out of the, getting out of the, well, in the past it was done this way, but that really wasn't best practice. And now we are trying through, all of us, engaging Maureen and others, to get best practices involved. Hopefully that has some legs.
Well, and there's an awful lot of information in terms of those kinds of things that is already out there. You know, in terms of the state, as she referenced, the state library, and also ALA. And, you know, almost all of those organizations have a robust section of these kinds of, you know, helpful kinds of.
Well, one of the things that comes to mind is when you and Nina and I started, Keith did this sort of, well, it wasn't a one-on-one session, it was a one-on-three session. But it involved, it did not involve Grace and Mark at that time. And what I'm hearing Maureen say is, this is something that would be, as a best practice, to have the whole board sit down at the time of a new board member coming on, and have a group refresher. So which is not something that we have done.
Well, I think it's essential. It's essential, because I would think one of the things that drives all of you in this group right now is a desire to have this board be effective. You've invested a lot of effort in getting to this point. And I think, Peter, as you posed this question, I was sitting here thinking, you now want to make sure that the foundation is laid for the board, as the membership is changing, for the board to continue to be successful. So I presume this is one that everyone agrees to?
Maureen?
Yes.
Could I go back to the first item again, please?
Sure.
Personal gain, and then it talks about personally or financially benefiting. And then you talked about Sean, or Sean talked about his business. I am involved in a program, a tax program that is part of the library activity that I have a huge vested interest in its success. And so it says personally or financially. Would it be appropriate to say, might benefit him or her or other organizations or entities, not just personally, but other organizations or entities?
I think two things about this statement. The first is, this is coming from an established set of ethical principles that board members are expected to follow. So I don't see you changing this in any way. But I also think it's important, this is my second point, to read the whole sentence, because the conclusion of this is critical, that you would avoid situations that would benefit you personally or financially at the expense of library customers or the situation. So it's a different way of saying that you're agreeing not to behave in a way that you would take advantage of the fact that you're a board member that would work against the people being served by the library. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, because there are opportunities to take advantage of being a board member without the expense of anyone. And so that helps a lot. Thank you.
That should help Sean a little bit, too.
Sorry, I didn't mean to pick on you earlier.
So. So if you're willing, I would like, Grace, to introduce the point you raised earlier, Grace, about clarifying what is confidential as we look at the third one.
Hey, I happen to underline what I think are the pertinent aspects of this. Okay, so this is, again, Wyoming statute 16-4-405, executive sessions. The things that belong in executive sessions in summary are things that pose a threat to the security or public or private property, or threat to the public's right of access. It's also executive session material when we're considering the employment, employment, right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, unless the employee requests a public hearing. Okay, so when you're dealing with personnel problems. And it also adds that following a hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive sessions. So in that, that point is in the same paragraph, is talking about personnel matters. So you can, the personnel matters, that's appropriate work within executive session to be very. Another topic that's executive session is litigation, national security, licensing agents, that doesn't really apply, purchase of real estate, considering acceptance of gifts, donations, and requests, which the donor has requested be kept confidential. Consider any information classified as confidential by law. And the last item, I think, no, not the last, but consider accepting or tendering offers concerning wages, salaries, benefits, and terms of employment during all negotiations, including, I make this a list. So when you're involved with offers concerning wages, salary, benefits, and terms of employment during negotiations. And that, to me, implies that once it's settled, it does not necessarily belong in executive session, is how I read that. And then it talks about the administration of executive sessions. So the summary is, an executive session may be held only pursuant to a motion that is duly seconded and carried by a majority vote. I guess that's all administration. So the key points were the earlier ones. And that's a pretty small list of things that we can have executive sessions for. And I just wondered if that's pretty comprehensive, and if that's a good definition to follow on that.
Well, we have to follow that, right?
Yeah, well, of course, we have to follow that. Yeah, does that encompass it? Is that comprehensive enough? And is there anything we want to add, or?
Well, I guess, if Keith were here, I can hear and say, whatever's not written into the statutes is not something you could add more to. And have it hold up, that if it's not specifically, unlike the Constitution, it's not a specific, you know, it's not allowed to add.
It's not here you can add things that you want to be.
Exactly. So our interpretation of that, Grace, is that, for example, we have Kip's goals and performance goals for the year that we're about to discuss in the next, in the next board meeting, that that would say that that is an open discussion, not a closed discussion, even though we haven't settled on it yet. No, that.
I can't, I can't see performance as a subject in this at all. So that means it would be not subject to executive session.
Is that your practice generally? Is that your experience, Maureen?
My experience is that person.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Personnel matter, executive session, and that performance would be a personnel matter.
Because that was my impression as well.
But I think.
I think most of the library board, just based on my experience with, not just this board, but years and years and years of sitting through library board meetings, most of those boards had too many executive sessions, because they either didn't feel comfortable about talking about it in public, whether they could or they couldn't, or sometimes they didn't know. So they would err on the side of caution, particularly if the attorney wasn't sitting right there, you know, couldn't tell. But I do think, in terms of helping the library, that transparency is a primary importance, and that it spreads from the board through the organization. And therefore, you know, it's very important, I think, to stick to the statute, not make an error, you know, but not overdo it either, which is easier said than done sometimes, I do realize that. But I don't see a problem with doing performance reviews, because I think it's an intrinsic part of how the library operates and what the public sees.
Well, mine wasn't a performance review, it was a goal-setting session where he's proposing performance goals for the year, and we're discussing whether we think they're reasonable and reasonable, we want to tweak them. It's not a settled thing. When we talked to Keith after this last board meeting, because we had talked about making the process of how we go about setting Kip's goals public, and differentiating between the process of how we're going to go about doing that, and what those actual performance goals settings were, what the goals and objectives were. He differentiated between the two, also between the process being in the public and the actual goals themselves being in private. And I think one of the things I want to do is confirm that again before this next meeting.
Well, and I think it would be helpful for all of us, probably including our attorney, if we had a fairly detailed agenda of what was proposed to be in each one of these that was simply given to him as a working document before we got down to it, to make sure we don't make mistakes. You know, because it's hard sometimes to tell what's, you know, what's minutia and process, and what really should be a personnel-type issue. You know, sometimes there's a lot of crossover. So I think it would, it would help me, and I'm sure the attorney would be happier just because, you know, more is better, probably, in terms of, like I say, making sure we're hitting the bar.
Well, it's, I think, something that's.
Not clear to me, when we talk about process of performance management, what that means.
Well, I think process is, here's what we're going to do. We're going to go and we're going to set up goals for the year, and we're going to meet once, you know, once a quarter to review Kip's performance against those goals. And we're going to, I mean, that's the process. And goals themselves, and the, and how he is doing relative to them, in terms of performance review, I think that's the issue, is whether that should be an executive enough, because almost no other member of my know-of county staff as a director level has their employee reviewed in a public forum.
Yep. There's another piece of the law here, and it's the obligation that the employer has to the individual employee for privacy. And usually, a big piece of that is the performance, and not the planning for it, but the actual content of the performance. But Dale, I thought you were doing a really nice job of clarifying what this group might do, which is to develop your own shared understanding and reflect it in a document of what it is that the statute is saying is the basis for confidential. of what it is that the statute is saying is the basis for confidential discussions and executive session, but also making the point that even this ethical statement is making. And that is that you have to balance the compliance with those applicable laws with the access to, or for the public meetings piece of it. And transparency is a key element here. But being as clear as all of you can be about where it is that you have an obligation to use executive session for getting into what the statute is calling for and maybe what is important in preserving the privacy of employees, but also where it is that the public has a need to know. And I also would recommend, and this is one of the things I really wanted to stress with this group. I think it's really important to get guidance from Keith. But I would really urge you going forward to have that guidance come to the board as a whole. That individuals would no longer reach out to Keith for reading on something, but that you would reach agreement as the board to ask for that guidance from the county attorney.
Just to belabor a small point. To me, the goals themselves, the goals of a performance plan would be, would be public. Because they are something that my guess is that the director will be sharing with his employees in, in, in this case. But the evaluation against those goals would be confidential.
Well, I would also add one little notion, a little tidbit to that, which is the discussion of what those goals might be, the negotiation of the goal that is, is done, that is something that is not a subtle thing. But coming out with what's agreed upon as those goals are the subtle thing. And it would be the public, certainly a public. Because I think if, if I thought that, that KIP needed to be able to personally shell a hundred thousand books in the library, it's his goal. And, and, you know, that's something we wanted to talk about. You know, he would, you know, I don't think that should be definite, you know, it's ridiculous. I mean, if there were, I'm making the point to, I mean, exaggerating to make a point. But I think there could be unreasonable performance goals that I might have with him that we need to discuss as a group, and they're gonna get tossed out. And that making of the sausage doesn't necessarily be done in a public forum. To take your example, just a little bit further. If you put for that goal, he's gonna personally shell a hundred thousand books. And then someone brings up the point that says, well, KIP is not physically capable of doing this. We're discussing his capacity. And does that slip into something that should be confidential? And I feel like the statute, as it was read, seems so overly broad that anything involving employment could fall under that confidentiality umbrella. I think that's, well. I don't, I sure would too.
And I, I need to confess, I'm being a bit cautious here because I, it's been easily ten years since I really felt well informed on employment law. But that's the piece that you really want to have some clarification about. But I think even in the way you're discussing this, you're drawing a distinction between the outcome of the discussion that you would have. That is the set of goals to which there was agreement and the need for confidentiality in the engagement with KIP, where you're reaching agreement on what those goals would be.
Dale, can you give me some color on why executive session felt so bad when you were a staff member?
Oh, I don't think I said that. I said I, I thought they had too many of them, you know. Whether it was bad, good, or indifferent, certainly at the time was not up to me. I felt that it was a, it was bad PR. You know, it looked like the board couldn't have a conversation in public without going into an executive session. And, and there were boards that would do it two or three times during the course of the meeting. And, and my personal feeling about it was, and I'm not saying there couldn't have been something that they needed to do that. I'm just saying that with some planning and some careful consultation with your attorney, you might have been able to avoid those. And it, to me, it was bad PR. It looked like they were spending too much time doing things in secret, secret, that dealt with a public institution.
Did you ever feel like, after those occurrences happened, that you eventually knew why? Or did you, did you feel like they just sort of happened? And it, it just kept happening? For like, I guess I'm asking, did it ever feel like, in the time, it, it looked silly or it looked secretive or it looked unplanned? But in six months, you realized, oh, they must have been talking about X. It makes sense that they were in executive.
Not normally, because I normally knew what they were gonna talk about. Not that they had necessarily shared it with me, but because I was involved in the administration of the library and because I went to so many board meetings, I didn't always know. That's not entirely correct. But a lot of times you had a general feeling about what it's probably gonna be. I, I never knew the details, which wouldn't have been appropriate either, you know. But, but it was just, sometimes I felt that it was overdone. And even if it had been necessary, there was probably a way to plan it a little better so that it didn't look quite so overdone, if you know what I mean? Because perception can be everything, regardless of how well intentioned you are or, or how hard you're trying or, you know. And it is a public institution. I think it's very important to try to err on the side of openness. And some of those groups had backgrounds where that wasn't the way they had operated too. And we're all human, let's face it. We already had this conversation about personal opinions and, and philosophies. And it's almost impossible to completely split yourself in two when you get in a situation like this and just not have any of that come into play. So some people were better at being objective than others, you know. I mean, everybody's human, you know, so. But, but some of them just were a little over the top, in my opinion. And of course, they never asked. So it didn't make a darn difference.
But Dale, it's kind of like what we did this last time when we had the last executive session, which is, I hate having the, we're now going into an executive session. And so what, what I tried to do, because we don't want to create the precedent of saying why it is, so that the time that you don't say why it is, people are gonna really speculate. I just did it verbally, right? And that's not a really good solution. I mean, you know, we're gonna go into the next session, we can't talk about the performance of goal planning for KIP. I mean, that, but that's really not, we should find a better way of doing it.
Well, I just feel like communication is very important.
Transparency.
And transparency, and the more you can put out there, it helps to sort of mitigate that. Now we're gonna kind of step into the secret part of the meeting, you know, we just.
Where we're doing all the real business.
Yeah, yeah. And it's hard to get away from that because unfortunately, in, in life, there are a lot of examples of people not doing it right. And so you don't have to look very far to see some bad examples or, you know.
But I think this group has come to a point where you do want to do it right. And in addition to the rich conversation you've just had about this third one, the idea of creating a document that presents so that you have easy access to it, what the statutes require, has come out. That would be another useful tool that you could have as part of your board resources.
I also think, I guess there's two things I'm protective of for the board, and one, well, one is KIP. Like, so in the last, the last, I was not in the last meeting in September because of work. But there was a lot of discussion about telling people what we were gonna talk about during the executive session. And I, I'm at the place where I would rather just say, we're going into executive session. Because I think at some point, you might need that secrecy for, not necessarily for KIP, but like thinking of the example of real estate. So if we wanted to buy the Virginian across the street, we wouldn't want everyone to know that. And if we are constantly telling people what we're gonna talk about in executive session, and then suddenly we stop, to me, it's more nerve wracking. Either it suggests that something's going on with our personnel that's not great or we're up to something, you know, that we don't want people to know about. And to me, that invites more questions. And I'm sort of like, if you just say you're gonna have executive session and, and eventually it will perhaps come out and we bought a huge piece of real estate or, you know, that KIP won the lottery and is leaving, that, those things sort of become apparent in the end. But I think we do need to allow ourselves, while we want to give the public as much as we can, we need to allow ourselves the right to some privacy when we need it. And I think we need to, that's a feeling about it. So I'm sort of not saying I want to hold secrets, but I think there's a, there are times when you need to have that.
But I actually think the statutes give you the perfect solution for that. Because I think there is language that Grace just read us, and there's probably more in there. You've probably been reading the whole thing, Grace, that actually would allow us to refer to things like personnel, that's pretty general, process, several other words in there that, that are part of the public record. That's in the public statutes that we could use to introduce, shall we say, for lack of a better word, an executive session. So it's more of providing a title for it than providing necessarily information, which of course, we're not allowed to do. And I think just the effort of, of, the process of making that effort makes it look more transparent and feel more transparent. So I actually think the tools are right there in the statute.
So if I may, I want to make two suggestions. One is that Dale has just identified another piece of work that could be done at some point. And that is to come up with that list of general categories deriving them from the statutes. But the second one is to just suggest, this isn't something that you have to decide today, that we keep moving through the list of board member ethics. And you can do this as follow-up work. Does that make sense?
Yes, I just read it. I just made a note to get in touch with Keith on behalf with all the board to, to, on a couple of issues, just, just.
Great. That's great. I would just also observe that this is the kind of discussion that you want to look to have in your board work. Including Grace saying a while back, I've, I've forgotten your language, Grace, but you were apologizing for getting into the weeds is the way I would put it. That was an important statement for you to have made. And it's a big piece of how it is that when you're deliberating as the group, you can actually get to a point where everyone can accept the result because you've all been heard. And your individual issues, once expressed, have been worked through.
I also appreciate someone willing to get into the weeds.
Look where it led us. I mean, it led to some really substantive conversation. So are we ready to move on to intellectual freedom?
Now, to be a troglodyte and an oldster, this is motherhood and apple pie. And I think that's what all library boards should do, which is, libraries exist for a diversity of opinion, as much as we could possibly do, and for lack of censorship on those things, despite what other entities across the country might be doing, or maybe even closer other entities in our state might be doing. This is motherhood and apple pie.
Well, and it's a really important piece when I think about the obligations that KIP and the library staff feel to uphold the freedom of expression and the right to free speech. This is really saying you, as the board, hold a responsibility to support them.
Well, I guess this also is an important thing for the Board of County Commissioners to know ahead of interviewing people. In my case, and then it says, I don't like such and such in this library connection, collection, or I don't believe these sorts of people could be coming in to talk. Not that anybody, it wouldn't be smart if they did that in their interviews, but, you know, people can run for office, run for an appointment.
Yep. It is happening. It is happening.
Because this is the foundation on which we operate. The board has in the past, though we don't know by date or anything, upheld the ALA's freedom to read, migrate, bill of rights, and freedom to view statements. At the, next week, at the October board meeting, many of those statements have been updated since the last time the board. So the board is going to be asked to pass a resolution supporting and affirming those statements. And in light of what is going on around the country and in Wyoming, we have pulled out the reconsideration of library materials, which is like a two or three sentences in our material selection policy. And we have developed an intellectual freedom policy that includes reconsideration, and that will be coming before the board next week as well. So it, it, it just, it elevates what the board believes or should believe.
Great.
So, KIP, you, you say that would be a resolution?
Well.
Why wouldn't it be a policy that we adopt?
The ALA statements are, I talked to Keith and he said that a resolution was perhaps just to affirm those statements and that their guiding principles for the library, the intellectual freedom policy will be a policy.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Well, I guess if you're proposing it next week, we should hear if there are any objections to it today.
Well, what we really want to do is make sure everybody understands this ethical statement and is ready to abide by it. Is there other discussion on this one? I think the point raised, Peter, about making sure the Board of County Commissioners understands not just this one, but the whole set of principles before appointing members is a really important one.
I think they, they asked me what I would do about banning books in my interview.
They didn't ask me.
Yeah, see that?
So worrying.
Yes.
When, when there are violations of the ethics, how are those pursued? Is there a normal process? Does that go to the chair? Does that? I'm just curious as to, that gets addressed, violations of ethics, by an individual board member or the board as a whole?
That's a really good question, and I don't know the answer to it, but that's probably something you want to learn about. And that may be another reason for the board as a whole to engage Keith in a conversation. I also think this might be something you would want to learn from, learn about from Jamie Marcus.
Well, when we've engaged Keith on this issue, because it was, it came up in, when we were tossing around in March, April, and May, sort of accountability issues amongst ourselves as generic board members. Keith basically said, you guys don't have, you can set whatever you'd like in terms of guidance for your, how you want to operate. As Dale said earlier, it's just applicable to this board. And it's subject to change by this board. And you don't have any right to do any kind of disciplinary action because we are appointed. because we are appointed, and we can't, we don't self-regulate. We don't have any type of authority to say, "Stalker, you've been violating this. You need to be off this board." The process is the B O C C, at the B O C C level. And they have the authority to lead or decide if there are issues. But it's not within our purview. We can set.
But then...
Rules are guidelines, and how we like to act and interact amongst ourselves, we can't discipline.
But you could bring it, you could bring it to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners. So that's probably the answer to Grace's question.
We do have a written, that is written from Keith to us as a board. And I shared again, it was sometime this June or May. It's in this past section.
Because I would think you have to in some way handle the situation. So is there discussion on the last one, fulfill board responsibilities?
Well, I'm feeling guilty because I'm not going to be here in November. I mean, being at a board meeting and being able to participate, I mean, it's within reason. I think it's 75%, I think is our, is our county goal on attendance of meetings, but even missing one meeting is problematic, because emotionally.
Life happens.
I know, but you know what? We hold each other up to try and be responsible participating board members, and I benefit in having the four of you guys be different in your viewpoint. And I am somewhat of a loss when one of you aren't able to be here. And I'm not thinking so highly of myself that you would feel the same way, but I just think when we act as a full board, we have the benefit of all of our experience, and that's really helpful.
But of course, this is also why, Peter, the board has a vice chair.
But she's not here in November either.
Oh, really?
Hi, Candy, on Zoom.
I can't, but that's just the matter of where I am.
So any other discussion on the ethics? If not, go ahead.
Block for a three-minute Washington story?
Sure.
Five minutes from now, if you want, if you have something that you'd like to...
Three minutes for everybody?
You want to get something that would take five minutes, or do you want to break down?
You should decide among you. I'm flexible.
Can you guys buy one off for a minute?
Why don't we just take a break?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I will pause.
So do you want to do a 10-minute break now, and then maybe another one a little bit later?
Sure.
Okay. 10 minutes from now, we'll reconvene.
I will be pausing the recording.
Great.
Okay, we are back.
Great. So are we ready to turn our attention to the Working Together Agreement?
Sure.
So here, what I invite you to do is to review the set of behaviors, and this is intended to be the behaviors that you individually will commit to follow in your work together as a board. And this is a chance yet again to raise questions, to make comments, because the goal of this, in this work session, would be that all of you agree to abide by them.
I can ask a question of Kip. Kip, are these posted, available to Maggie and Suzanne so that they would be able to see what we're seeing, or should we just read these?
I guess we'd have to read them, but they're, I think it's just, to be in fairness to the people that are listening on the conversation, would you mind, Maureen, if I just read these bullet points?
I would just, I would just challenge what you're suggesting because this is really a work session for the board, and certainly coming out of this, you could post these for the community.
Okay. Thank you.
When it's right, when the time is right, I, I think there's something missing here that I'd like to ask to consider, and that is focus on exchanging ideas and conversation, asking questions, concern, but putting in here that our objective is finding consensus. And I just didn't see that in this, in this, that, that whenever changing ideas and all, our objective is to reach consensus, and that helps me to know when I'm talking.
So Grace, I'm thinking we're looking at different documents. The one I have starts with assume positive intent, and it concludes with strive for consensus. Engage in thoughtful and full discussion.
And I wrote right under that. Okay, got it, sorry.
So you have the same one?
I don't know where I got that. Thank you.
I'm just so relieved that you have the same document. That's great. So is there anything on this list that any one of you would want to question?
You know, I guess my question would be that there is already an awful lot of really good information out there about this. The State Library, you know, all of the library organizations, that kind of thing. We do sign an agreement with, which isn't exactly this, but it's, you know, pretty much. It's headed in that direction. So that I guess I have, from, you know, several runs we've taken at this question, the necessity. Not that I don't think going over is a good idea, don't get me wrong. I think, you know, a refresh, refreshment of almost all of this stuff is, is extremely useful, but, but I'm not sure that given the preponderance of information on this sort of information, that, that it's really necessary.
So the reason I think it's necessary and will be helpful is, the intent here is that this is a set of behaviors that the five of you commit to follow. And this could be, Dale, one of the components of a board orientation packet that might change depending upon who's actually on the board. But it's also a set of behaviors that are typically identified as helpful when any group comes together and has work to do. The more you can engage in behaviors like this, the more likely it is that you will be effective.
And I agree, but, but this information, all of this information, is already in our board. So, not that, you know, you can't repeat, you know, repetition is a valuable tool. But, but I mean, we already, we actually do that in the board handbook.
I think the difference here is that signing a document is, while it's supposed to show that you've taken it in, than always. And I'm thinking a lot about Sean, and he is right here, so he can speak for himself. But, I mean, Sean came onto the board, and we have done, I wasn't with myself, I have done no work to say, "Sean, this is how I think this board works. These are the rules that I like to follow. Here, this is what I've seen happen." I don't know that we've had that discussion with you. Perhaps someone else has had that discussion with you, and good on you for taking care of Sean. So I would say, like, Sean got thrown into the deep end, and he came onto a board, and we did a meeting, and then we all left. And so I think that what I see here is for us to make a commitment that whenever someone new comes on, that we take time during that first meeting to actively discuss these things and say, "This is, this is our modus operandi to go forward." And to have that discussion and have everyone in the same room, you can't say that you didn't hear it.
Oh, I absolutely agree with that, but, but the information is already there. Sean, who can go online in terms of our board handbook, and all of these things are there. So, but I agree that there, it would be better. And I think we did have a conversation about this, but I don't think we did it. To, you know, have more of an introductory-type thing, a tour, a couple of us come along, come and go along, a, you know, informal look at the back of house. A lot of people have never even seen that, you know, there's kind of a little more informal thing. I think a big problem for this board has been the inability to really establish, for lack of a better word, a normal working relationship because of the runaround, because we have been forced to these digital solutions, which are not bad, but they're not all good either. And I don't think it has provided the opportunities to work together on, shall we say, a little more personal level that would normally happen if you weren't jumping through all these hoops to try to stay safe. Even these masks are a barrier. I mean, let's face it, you know? You can't hear, you can't see the person's face when they're talking. It's just, all of this has been a barrier to communication, and I don't think it has been a good thing. And certainly, we were not prepared, any of us, I don't think, and probably could have done better, although in our defense, it has been a learning situation. So, so that has been part of the issue. I don't think it's that the information is not available. I think that it's that the delivery has been made almost impossible because we're so distant from each other.
So Dale, let me just check with you based on the points you've been making. I don't hear you saying that you disagree or are not going to support this. I hear you rather saying you're questioning the need for it because the information's available in so many other places.
I am, and I don't think that... I think people make their own individual decisions about how they're going to behave, and I don't necessarily think signing a piece of paper changes that. And I feel that we're all grown-ups. We, I think we have a clear idea of, of best practices, and, and I think we should, it should be an expectation that that's what we're going to do. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel or necessarily think because we write it down on a piece of paper and everybody talks about it, that it's going to happen either. So, you know, my, my, I would prefer to assume that people are going to do what they need to do. And I have full confidence that this group understands that. I don't think anybody doesn't understand what we're talking about, so.
I guess where I have a slight difference, Dale, is having all of us in one room at one time once a year when they seat a new board member, or once a year if we haven't seen a new board member, just to sit down and have a 10-minute session of part of our board meeting if there's nobody new, or a separate session if somebody's new, to go through the litany of documents, including the things that you and I and Nina and everybody else has signed. But I signed a piece of paper, and then came at the end of a whole bunch of other stuff that came out of Keith. And it wasn't first and foremost, and I think it's helpful that it wasn't in front of the whole court. So I think that's the difference, a little. So as long as we're all comfortable about whether this is superfluous because it's already existed, some of that other documents that we've got going on, just having that opportunity at least once a year to sit down and all reaffirm that we all, oh, we don't have any problems, it shouldn't take five seconds if we don't get it all covered, people.
Oh, and I don't have a problem with that. I actually think we should be discussing it, and if, I think, a lot of times something will have come up that you can say, "Okay, how about this? You know, was this, was this an opportunity that we missed in terms of, you know, we could have, we could have been more successful in how we dealt with it?" So that, because I think you learn by doing, that's what you remember. It's not what you necessarily write down, or you read, or you, you know, you learn by doing. We all do, I think. So I don't have a problem in the world going over it. I think that's a really important thing to do. I just think that this is, I don't know, I don't, I don't think it has any more weight than anything else out there that we are presented with, that we are aware of, that is given to us to help us when we take on a position like this. So I guess that's part of why I don't see the need for it.
I would say that all those other documents are sort of addressing how you, as a board, as one entity, is working. I mean, I think this is talking about how you individually interact with each other. I sat on the Vermont Library Association Board, and the management team at Seattle Public Library. There's, you know, 13 people, close to it in both of those situations, where people are coming from, who knows where they're, where they're at, where they're coming from. And this was at the top, something similar was at the top of every agenda every week or every month that we would meet, that this is how we're going to work together today as individuals. And I think it's really important to have this for individuals to, those others are for things, but this is for individuals, and I think it's really important to address that. And I would put this at the top of every board agenda, then review that. This is a reminder how we're going to interact today.
Well, and I think that's a good idea, but I do believe that the individual guidelines are also included in the Wyoming State Board Handbook. That it's, it's not, most of it, you're absolutely right. It's specifically oriented towards boards, the board, the library board, a library board. But there are also individual, personal suggestions about how a board member should be acting and interacting and so forth and so on. So we could certainly consider this the short course, if you wanted to, because that's kind of what it is, and put it on the agenda. I don't think it's a bad idea at all. But I'm not sure it should assume more weight somehow than some of these, that it should be part of a whole, I guess. It would be a better way to put it.
Yep. Well, you brought it, you brought this right back to where I started in crafting this, was to get a shorter, more succinct set from a much longer set. So I'm going to push a little bit, Dale. Am I to understand from the points you're making that when I ask this group the question, which I'm going to do in this meeting, will you commit to following these? You're going to say yes.
Ah, they're pretty good.
So is there any other discussion of the set?
Well, I have some requests of my fellow board members, which is based on just what I'm reading in front of me, which is this list, which is not only do I want to be reminded of this in the board meeting, which is fine, but I want you guys to feel comfortable holding me to this when I'm not this way. but I want you guys to feel comfortable holding me to this when I'm not this way, finding not being this way. Because, yeah, I, part of what Dale's saying is we can read a piece of paper, we can sign a piece of paper. It, it's a piece of paper, but it's actually how we practice this that's, uh, when the road, I would hope in a calm and respectful way, you guys would tell me when I'm not being calm and respectful of you, because these other things are the wrong. Because I can't, I don't, I'm not very effective at looking in, like, in the mirror, rather, uh, sometimes. And I, I encourage you and invite you all openly to hold me to this. I'm not asking for everybody as a pledge of whatever, but this is what I want to see out of this kind of thing, which is turn it from words on paper to something where we trust each other enough to hold us ourselves accountable. If it is, and if we don't, we're all adults as Dale, like, as Dale says. And you know what? If I'm out of line, I hope you guys tell me. That's fine. Because it's gonna be done in a respectful, nice way.
But I mean, I think you have to take a lot of this on faith. I mean, listen to what it says. Listen to each other to understand and with an open mind. There's absolutely no way to know whether that's happening or not. Um, expect, respect, and work with different perspectives would probably be that. Be brief, honest, and clear when expressing ideas, thoughts, or concern. That, you have to take a certain amount of that on faith. Um, strive for consensus. You, you take a certain amount of that on faith, that somebody isn't really pushing their agenda and, you know, anyway, which is human. I mean, if, if someone absolutely believes that's the best thing for the library, I would expect them to push, you know? Um, assume positive intent. You pretty much have to take that on faith. I mean.
But I would love for you to be able to say, you know, I don't, I'm having an issue with what you're saying. If I don't think you're, if I'm doing this, I don't think you're being respectful if deals with Nina or whatever.
Well, hopefully Nina would.
I understand, but maybe she does want to speak up. I mean, I, again, I, I'm not trying to, I don't want to create a nanny state amongst us. I just want to, I'm trying to create as open a communication channel to help me be a better board member, correctly. Uh, to use you guys, if I'm not being effective in how I am operating, I would love, I would hope that you guys would let me know. That's all. That's all I'm saying. And yes, I gotta take it on faith, but you know what? Appearances and intent can be two different things. And my intent would be very much being brief, honest, and clear and striving for consensus. But if you not seen that, I would rather have somebody say, you haven't seen, you're trying to really, seems like you're trying to stick on a point where we really moved on. I would appreciate it. That's all. I'm sorry, Sean, I stepped on you.
I, I was gonna actually say two things, stepping back, uh, as the Sean in the room. The new guy. You know, I, we did discuss, like, oh yeah, let's do this onboarding, and it never really happened. I think it was, everybody had a lot of things going on. And I think any reasonably sensible person could probably step into this role and with the documents provided, come up just be, I mean, as Nina said, it, it did feel at times like I was kind of in the deep end right off the bat. And, and I'm, I'm still getting at this, but I'm increasingly comfortable with, with everything. But maybe putting together an onboarding document out of this work, and that could be another discussion, might be a helpful, helpful thing. I did go through the, the documents. That helped. So I, I think that would be a good outcome of this. Um, and then more specifically to this list, I feel like, you know, I, I feel so fortunate to be involved with this group of sensible, bright people who have the best interests of the library in mind, obviously. It almost seems, you know, in that context, discussing these things so explicitly almost seems a little silly. It's like, well, of course, this is common sense. But then I think about, what if in the future, some sort of activist person got on the board with bad intent? Let's say with an agenda that they wanted to, you know, censor some kind of materials or something. And as that came out, I think having these things codified a little bit gives the board ammunition to say, oh, wait a minute. I don't think you're acting in good faith or, you know, your, your intentions here are a little out of line. Like the ability to speak up and, and say that. I mean, hopefully that would never happen, but you see it does happen in cases. So I, I think there's, I, I, I think, you know, explicitly stating these things for some future situations, maybe not such a bad thing.
So I have a responsibility after this session today to confirm a set of documents. And I welcome your suggestion that those documents be put together in a packet for onboarding. I think that's a great idea, and I'll be happy to work with Kip and Peter on that following today. So is there anyone in the group who is not ready to confirm agreement to follow these practices?
What do you mean when you say confirm agreement? I'm perfectly willing to confirm agreement. I'm not sure I'm comfortable with signing something.
I'm not asking you to sign.
Yeah, because I, I just feel like what Sean said was, I think we all get it. We all know how it needs to go, and, and it's a little silly.
But more than that, Dale, from my experience with this board, and I know the membership of the board has changed as we've gone through this. When I first started working with this board in March, there were behaviors here that were not being followed, but now they are. And it's really to your credit that you can say, it seems a little silly because we already do this, but I'm also seeing that there is agreement to follow this. And one of the suggestions that's been made is these are posted so that in your meetings, there, there is a reminder. I think I heard Kip say he's worked in situations where they've been on the agenda, just at the front of the agenda.
I mean, also, I think not, there's a little dancing going on. I mean, I think in the past that, say that maybe we haven't followed these. Given the history that we've all gone through, I would say, I would also say that we are, that in our community right now, there is a board sort of struggling with these things right now. So to say that these are super easy and that we all do them and we come into the room, um, I think we can all believe that we're that person. And I think when you get stressed out or something hard happens, these are the first things to go. And we have, we, to, to, to not acknowledge that we have experienced that would be disastrous. So I think that's the first thing we need to do, is say that we have all failed at this. Sean gets to step out of the room. For now, here, so he's, but like, for us to, to say that we have all done these every day that we've been on this board is probably not true. And we're all, I, I will take this, I, again, you can tell I have preschoolers, I'll work on my eye statements. Like, I, I will just say for me, that has happened. And I, I can easily say, I would say that that's happened for all of us. You might disagree. So to say that these things are obvious and that we all do them and that we all come in with them, I think that's true until it becomes really hard. And then we, and then we can very easily stop doing them.
Well, and I don't think that is true. I don't think everyone comes to the table with, and I'm talking in a general sense right now. I don't think everyone comes to the table on, on every board with, with these as an intent. I absolutely do not. We've just had that discussion about people have ulterior motives and it doesn't always work. I don't think a list like this ever works all the time. I don't think anyone, it's possible for anyone to be human and to be constantly successful in doing all of these things um, for a number of reasons. Um, I do think that a majority of this board, you're absolutely right, did not do this in the past. And I think it has had an effect on our ability to work together and to work together in a more trustful manner than perhaps we might have been able to do if we hadn't had an unfortunate series of events in the past. Um, I think it's another reason why I am reluctant at this point personally to sign anything because I honestly feel that this board is still a work in progress. I do think our working relationship, and this is a really important part of it, needs, we need to go forward and keep working on it. And, and I'm, I'm gonna give us a little buy because we have been isolated in ways that it's never happened before. But, um, so I am not, I don't have a flaming optimism going into this. That this is necessarily going to, you know, transform us individually or as a board. That would be the best possible scenario, and we could certainly all hope for that. But, you know, I personally need a little more time to see how it's going to work.
So Dale, if I may, I'm, I'm getting ready to ask each of you to state whether you're willing to agree to these or not. But what I'd like to do is reframe it a little bit to address that concern. I am not asking anyone to sign anything. I'm thinking from what you just said, that this should be framed as a set of guidelines for working together, where the understanding is, as you pointed out, no one can do all of these things all of the time. And, but what you would be doing is saying, I recognize that these are ways for us to behave, and I'm gonna pick up on what you just said a few minutes ago, to really build trust among us and to have us be effective as a group that has the responsibility for delivering our best performance in this board work.
Well, and I think Peter's point is well-taken too, that we, it, it is absolutely possible for us to help each other. And, you know, we can, okay, you, you didn't do it right, okay? And this would be my suggestion, and everybody else can kick in too, you know?
Are we using eye statement? What are you saying? I think.
I, I do, absolutely. That's me. This is me talking.
I think.
Absolutely what I.
What I saw was.
Yeah. That I don't think you did it right, and this is what I would suggest.
Which is what I would hope you guys.
And I think we can help each other, I really do. Because I think in the ordinary run of things, more of that would have happened. I honestly believe that. There would have been more give and take on, let's say, a more informal basis.
Yep. Particularly if that kind of statement can be made just as soon as you observe the gap in behavior. Because you're offering help to get the person back on track.
Well, if you, if you recognize that is a very difficult social thing for people to do.
Yep.
We have been brought up as, in the United States at least, as being polite, and we don't really tell our real feelings to somebody, but, you know, they're not family. Unfortunately, family tells the truth too often. But you know what? I, I mean, this sounds corny, but this is this group. You know, this group has got a very important, uh, responsibility to our community, to all sorts of constituencies. And this is a family. To truck it, we're gonna work well together. We gotta have the honest with each other. And to the point of pointing out, questioning motive, you know, questioning motive. If there's, if there's something that I'm, that I'm doing that it needs to be questioned, and that's fine. I, 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 yeah, I think I'm repeating myself, so I'm sorry.
May I suggest a book in this situation, sitting here in the library? Uh, Radical Candor is an excellent book in talking about how to talk. Because you can borderline on being a swear word, uh, when you're being honest. And you have to sort of balance, uh, being kind while also telling someone what you think they've done that is wrong.
And what was the title of the book I didn't?
It's called Radical Candor. And honest, I mean, here, like, um, she has a TED Talk, which I will happily send out to you. It's probably easier than actually having to read a book. Sorry, I'm in the library and saying that. But I'll send out the TED Talk to everybody. And it's, I, I think it's 20 minutes. But the, the, the reality is, is that if you have a real relationship with someone, if you have a relationship where that you feel like they know you and they trust you and they've taken the time to understand who you are, that it's much easier to hear, hey, you may have overstepped the line at that point. And so it's really about establishing trust, of, of trust in a real working relationship with the people that you're going to end up having uncomfortable conversations with. And so it, and, and then it talks a little bit about how you say that, but I think that's the premise, really. So open it up for the case.
And the motivation is what was described. It's to be helpful to one another. So are we at a point where each of you can say you're in agreement to follow these? And I will frame them as guidelines. I'm really testing for that agreement, but also have we had enough discussion on this document? Anyone prepared to say, I'm not ready to agree? Peter, what's your sense, being there in the room? Are we ready to move on, or is there more to be said?
I think we've beaten this one down.
It should be the easiest one.
It should be. I think it's also a little warm to where it's, uh.
I mean, it's the easiest one to put on paper, the hardest one to live by. And I think we're talking about.
Living.
Living it, which is fair.
Well, and when you talk about living it and you're recognizing that, you have to keep in mind, you're not gonna be able to do it all the time. But you, I hear in this conversation, an understanding that you can help each other by calling to your attention when you're not following a guideline here. And then you're gonna discover there's a difference between what people experience and what your intention was, which is one of the most challenging parts of human interaction. So the other document that I think we want to review here is the Revision to the Library Director and Board Responsibilities Grid. And there's a version of this that reflects the work that Kip and I did to revise it after September 13th. And it is dated September 17th. And I think with this one, we just want to be sure that we've captured what people were suggesting and that you don't have any other questions about the distinctions between the two, the two sets of roles.
There's a date on this that I'm, which one, what's the title on the piece of paper? I'm not sure.
It's called TCLID Director Board Responsibility underscore Maureen dot docs.
Oh, this one.
On that paper, I thought, as a footnote, it says revised September 17th. On our Roblox, on electronic, is dated October 4th.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I did look at that, yeah.
So Kip and I think we captured everything. We're just checking to make sure you agree.
Yeah, I, just for some more clarifications.
Sure.
You participate under meetings, when you participate in all board meetings, I, I'm seeing how I'm gonna be absent at the next one. I am now violating this whole thing. How about? How about a minimum of 75%, which is what our standard is?
Sure. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Um.
Agreeing to participating in those that you are attending. Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
That, that's just my interpretation.
Okay. Strive to. When you are in a board meeting to participate. I got you. Okay, it's not an attendance thing, it's when you're there, participation thing. I apologize, I misread it.
I could see how you would misread it though.
Well, and the the county, I think, with 75% tried to, you know, give you a, a goal, you know, general thing. And now we're seeing the town having to try to deal with it because theirs evidently wasn't quite as specific, so. So it's better to have something than, than miss probably than have nothing at all, so.
How about if you added in front of participate, just say actively participate in board meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, actively participate in board, in all board meetings when in attendance.
Just take out all, I think we could just wait, we're.
Perfect. How's that work? Perfect, brought the off. I'm happy with that, thank you.
Any, any other issues or suggestions?
Do you, do you just participate?
It doesn't say all.
I know.
Exactly.
Well, it would be good to have the, if you're missing any different opportunities for someone to grow and stretch themselves.
And act as a library director?
And act as a library director.
Yes.
There's opportunity when people miss things. Always a name.
What you guys find is thoughtful, pleasant. I'm not happy around, but that's. I think that's a good suggestion, huh?
So I didn't catch all of what Nina said, were you suggesting a change here, Nina?
I was just, I'm just being humorous.
You're entitled. So is there anything else on this? And I think the last document for us to review is the shared responsibilities document. Do you all have it? And the bulleted items are coming directly from the Wyoming handbook. And then there was a suggestion at some point to possibly add agree on a set of assumptions and basic premises in advance of the annual budget preparation. I think that might have actually come up in the September 13th meeting. So you may see it differently, but I think because this is in the handbook, the one point of discussion for us in this session is the addition of agreeing on the set of assumptions.
Well, my personal opinion is that our role is to ask Kip, when he presents the process for the budget to out his set of assumptions and basic premises going into that. And then we review those and say, have you forgotten about this? Or that's great, or what about those? And then out of that, have a collective understanding going forward into that process, what those are, and then if they need to be amended during the upcoming months, because it's a two-month process, uh, we can come back for a discussion about the potential amendments to the assumptions. That's, that's how I view this as a, as a financial guy, but I could, that's one view.
It actually seemed to me that that's more process than it is. Although the budget is a shared responsibility.
And I'm thinking Dale, the way Peter just expressed that, that adding the statement that's here on this piece of paper to the shared responsibilities doesn't take away from the fact that Kip is, Peter's describing a couple of steps in the process. And the intent here is that you as the board and Kip agree on that set of assumptions.
The, what's missing from my perspective on this list is Kip's role in this. And that's what is, that's what I was reacting to.
Ah, okay. So we could put in parentheses after basic premises, um, proposed by Kit, proposed by the library director?
Agree with the director. Yes, agree with the director.
Wow, okay.
Which agreement with the director.
Why wouldn't we say something like collaborate and agree?
Yeah, what if they agree with the director?
Um, you know, and I realize we're not trying to get in the process of that, but we could say, you know, work collaboratively for agreement with the
Yep.
Director.
So we could, there could be an introduction that says collaborate to reach agreement on the set of assumptions.
There you go.
I just, I was just the absence, the Kip in the process was what's bothering.
Yeah.
So explicitly, you want to say collaborate with the director. To agree on the set of assumptions.
And Peter, the context for all of this is the heading. It's the Library Director Board Shared Responsibilities.
Yeah, correct. I guess I would leave it to you to think up how the, the verbians, the molecularist phrase. And then perhaps in coming back through with Kip, you can, you can prove that's what the phrase is.
Sure, happy to do it, but I'm, I really like what Dale just suggested. The use of the word collaborate. So as long as that's captured, there's agreement that this is a workable set of shared responsibilities.
I have a comment. Collaborate on the strategic planning process. The planning process, no problem with that. But don't we need to add that we have a shared responsibility to ensure pursuit and alignment of the strategic plan? Ensure pursuit and alignment of the strategic plan. We don't just participate in developing it, but we ongoing watch and make sure that we're following it.
Yep. Does that make sense to everyone?
It does, but again, are we trying to amend the Wyoming Public Library Board Members Handbook? Or are we adding a clarification below as our own expansion of it?
Well, isn't that what we just did on the bottom one?
Well, number three on the, is the bulk of it, I'm just saying, you know, did, I'm just trying to say, we're not going to add it to, forget it.
Okay.
I'm just asking where it goes.
Oh, where it goes. It could be separate at the beginning.
It might make sense going forward to keep the ones that are derived from the handbook separate. And then to note the two that you're adding. Any other discussion on this or suggestions?
I have a, I mean, really nitpicking question. The bullet on evaluated community needs, how, how are those assessed and presented to the board? Like, is that, is that assessment assumed to be part of the evaluation?
Traditionally, um, I think the director has brought what he or she sees as crap in the library at that time. And the board traditionally has brought, brought, um, community issues perhaps that board members think have an impact or could have an impact to the meetings, so just historical, from a historical basis, it's been kind of joint effort. You know, with the board bringing more general input from the community and the director, more specific input from in terms of the library needs. Um, there may be a way to make that a little more clear, and, and I'm not advocating that's the way it has to work, but that's just kind of.
No, and that was, that was my understanding of the two, but I just kind of thought, if we're taking the time to, like, go through all of these things, is that something that needs to be stated? Common sense to me seems like it doesn't, but I just wanted to raise that point. I mean, I, I think we could let it stand, probably. Okay.
Other discussion on this? So I have one more item, but before I get to that, do you have other things you wanted to cover? We've reviewed the documents that we agreed were part of this session. And I'll tell you, my other one is to pick up on Sean's suggestion that we start to put together an onboarding packet for new board members. Is there anything else you want to cover in the meeting?
So the place that these documents are going to, or agreements, policies, whatever, are going to reside is in the onboarding packet. And we're not going to put them into our policies, procedures and agreements packet.
So I think that's a question for the group, Grace. I was just going back to what I thought was a great idea from Sean, that there's a really good basis here for pulling together an onboarding packet. But you're proposing that there be more formal adoption. Is that right? So what do you think?
Yes, yes, I have to, I'm proposing that, that we've begun to put together a set of policies, procedures, agreements that are how we do business. And these are how we do business, how we do our business. Those are under our control to modify whenever we choose to. And I, I hope that we will keep them a living document, but I would like to see these go into that package of materials, which is part of our handbook.
Great. What do your colleagues think? Any disagreement or questioning of that proposal?
Well, I actually think this is in addition to what we're already, we already have. That we have personalized here and there in terms of clarity and those kinds of things. Because obviously we're still bound by statute and, you know, all of that. I guess I was interested in what Sean said in terms of it would be helpful to have something that was specifically more onboarding. And I could see where this might be kind of a short course, for lack of a better word, again, in terms of, because there's so much information when you come on the board, I mean, my gosh, it's like, I'm, the term is not long enough for me to read all this, you know? So that, um, but I don't know how to get at what Grace was talking about through both. Although all of the information is applicable, obviously, but I'm not sure, what do you think, Maureen? I mean, should we separate some of it out and call it onboarding and then also include it in the body of the information or, or what do you say?
Well, I heard, I heard two things, though. I heard onboarding, but I also heard an annual review. Because we may have years where there's nobody who's on board.
That's true.
And so I, I mean, I, so I just want to put that out there, I'm not sure how.
I mean, I think, uh, I think this last transition was, was a struggle, like, we didn't have a chair. There was only one new person coming on, so it'd be too.
Forget it.
Forget. So there was, there were a lot of things happening, but I mean, I, I don't have a problem. I just think it should become a part of the July meeting that we do a little bit of the onboarding if we want to be public. I mean, my onboarding was done privately in with the chair at the time and I think Mark, great. So. Were you there? Were we all there? Yeah. So we weren't board, we weren't board members yet. And I can't remember, maybe Sean, your, like, I think we had more notice, notice about being a board member than you did, given the timing of when they appointed people. Yeah, so I think that, that also was part, you know, it was, it was just a lot of factor. So I, I think it just makes sense to sort of codify, like, in July, you spend some time talking about this is how we do business, this is what we expect you to do, we come to 75% of the meetings, that you participate, that you tell us when you think we're not acting well. Something like that.
But Grace was adding an extra layer to this, which is, okay, it's an onboarding package, but shouldn't we make this policy?
I mean, well, I don't know if it's policy, but I think we vote to agree that it, it shows agreement.
Yeah, an agreement. My, my concern is having too many pieces, too many places. I like our handbook and I think the update of it did a good job of pulling our unique Teton County Library ideas together. And this is unique Teton County Library, even though it is multiple places. I know all of these ideas come from other places, for the most part, but, but I would just like to keep things consolidated. So we have a package that says, here's how we do business. Whether it's, here's how we go to the county commissioners with our annual report. Here's how we work with the friends and foundation. And here's how we do business with the director. And here's how we, if you all will recall, we had three relationships that we were going to focus on. County Commissioners, Foundation and Friends, and our relationship between the board and the directors. And this is our relationship between the board and the directors, so I, I would just like to keep it all in the same place and make it flexible. I love the idea of annual review in the July meeting, or July, when we go through it with our new members, that we also look at, do we need to improve this or update it or change it? And that these are living documents, but capturing them in our handbook, which is online and is easy to put in there now, would seem like a good home for these documents.
I, I also think it could serve as a very helpful document, which we can't make them read it, but that would, if it's consolidated in one spot and refined, that it is a good handbook for the board of county commissioners to understand what it is that a director of the library, trustee of the library is doing. to understand what it is that a director of the library, trustee of the library is doing. Because, you know, they may not read it, but I think part of the, we are the fortunate benefit of a lot of good choice of the part of the board and county commissioners. We can't count on that always happening. Yeah, you know, we could, we, we're the, we're at the whim of the next, you know, the next board's deciding that somebody else should be on, that is not of the same kind of intent and purpose. So the more I think we can help them to understand how to frame the interview of people, but that, maybe this could be part of that.
And in that same vein of having them understand how we do business, I like the idea of it being in the handbook online, where any library staff person can look at it and say, oh, here's what the board is supposed to be doing, and here's what the director does. And here's how they share, here's where they share responsibilities. There has been a lot of misunderstandings in that arena in the past. And I would love to tell the staff, go look through our handbook. That's what we basically follow. And that's where our guidance comes from. And that defines our roles and responsibilities. So I, and wherever it ends up, I'd really like to see it being available to everyone.
Yeah. Oh, it's all about.
And a place that we can refer them to.
And I think it makes sense to put them all in one place, whereas you're describing it, people have access to it. And if it's all in one place, it makes the work that you need to do to make sure everything's up to date a little bit easier. So coming out of this session, am I on the right track in thinking that I work to create the final versions of these? I consult with Kip as needed, but you can expect the documents that I promised as outcomes of today's session.
Tell us a little bit about the timing from your workflow perspective, please.
I can get it to you this week.
I do have Maureen penciled into the agenda currently to present this at the board meeting. Beautiful. We just, she and I discussed whether that was possible.
This is not government work.
You know, something I'd like to just throw out there, too, while we're talking about trying to get more access to the information, which, of course, it's always been the intent, is taking a look, maybe at putting more dates on the site in terms of, because as Grace pointed at, you know, the focus has been to, you know, focus more closely with our supporting organizations as well as the county commission. And we now do have scheduled meetings and everything that we're doing well, all of those. And I, I think any of that kind of information that we can also get on the website helps to indicate, like you said, Grace, what are they doing over there? You know, and then you can go, oh, yeah, well, they do this, they do that, they, you know. I think we could, and I, I understand this is work for somebody, but I do think we could include more information on the website about some of these adjunct kinds of things, which, since we were kind of talking about that, I just wanted to throw that in.
Since you're bringing up the subject, could you have just a simple click on the front, on the homepage of the library to get to our stuff? If you've got a search.
You don't have to look for it.
Can you just have a, you know, click here for board matters or whatever? I had somebody call me and said, I'm really interested in putting my name in the hat. And I went to the website to try and find about board meetings and so forth. And all we got, it took me a good 20 minutes to get to finally the agenda. So I'm, I'm sorry, this is all hard. I just want, you guys are meeting as a technology subcommittee recently, too. So maybe, maybe that would be something for your side. Thank you. Sorry. That is great.
Does the whole board think about the agenda?
I don't know. Excuse me. Can the technology subcommittee take that up and then present it to the board through recommendation?
I think they do a review of the website, don't they, here and there? I mean, we used to.
Side of things, what is undergoing an update right now? I don't have very much what may happen to ours.
Right, yeah.
Also, whether to fire this off.
Who owns the website design in your organization?
Man, I feel like we are going outside of the. All right, I feel like I'm comfortable that maybe we should talk about this on.
Okay. Yeah. We have a subject.
So is there anything else you want to cover in this work session? I commend you for the quality of this work and this conversation. And once again, you're finishing early.
As a tangent, I would like to add that through this work that we've done, questions about the role staff had with the board has come up. And Maureen and I have discussed having a staff meeting where she will lead staff through this much shorter process, but identify what the board and the staff's relationship are, what the staff's relationship to the directors should be. Just sort of, it sort of puts the other piece of the puzzle together.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And if whatever is appropriate to share with us that was shared with the staff would be helpful to just sort of complete that move.
Yeah.
Yes.
We didn't really talk about that today. So, yeah, that would be just so we're all on the same page, yeah.
Would you say that you, you're personally in favor of that, that you, should we take a second?
I would suggest that as a board, maybe other people could speak to that, and if you disagree, feel free to speak up now. No, I agree. I mean, I think we are. That's my thought, that it would be helpful for all of us to know, but I would be interested in knowing what other board members think.
I take it, Kip, this has come out in some of your internal discussions and staff meetings and so forth. Because there is still, there might be some confusion on staff as to what our roles are some. Some members of the staff, what are our roles? Where they start and where they stop?
Yes.
That would be great. Grace, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Dale, I assume you are, you said.
No, I, I think it's important for us to understand our roles in a way that it doesn't get into, it doesn't get in the way of a working relationship. And I think sometimes that has happened in the past, that sometimes library boards feel like they can't interact with the staff, which I don't think is either true or helpful. So, so I think it's very important to have it clear about, you know, what's, what's appropriate and what isn't. And then we go forward and we're on the same team, because that's what we are. But I think there can be some confusion about, you know, how much is too much? And then people, unfortunately, I think human nature is to pull back rather than, you know, engage, which doesn't really get you.
Well, we are Seattle. We don't have millions of people. We have our friends. We have our friends and so forth here, so it's, it's also practical.
Kip, I don't know if you want to take this first, or you want me to, but I think it would be helpful for the board to know the key message we're going to deliver.
Well, can I, I mean, I think the other issue here is not just like how do we interact with the staff, though. The staff is wondering what the staff and the public have been thoughtful about whether the board is doing things that are the director's job. So I, I think that, maybe I'm overstepping here, but I think that maybe that's the other curiosity here is not just, can I say hello to a board member, but where, what does the board member actually task with and the, and the role, the line, which we tried to define here, which we, what's our responsibility and what's Kip's responsibility? Right?
That part, yes. And I know Maureen will do a much better job of stating, so I will let you say it, Maureen.
So for me, this comes out of the really good work you've done to clarify the role of the library board and the role of the library director. And wanting to be sure that the library staff understand that any interaction with board members is welcome, as long as it's not library business or issues or complaints that they have. That that work is really to go directly to Kip. And it's important that this understanding be there, because you've hired Kip now to run the library, and the library staff need to be ready to take any concerns or issues that they may have directly to him. And it's the way things work in just about every organization. The board is understood to have the governance role, to hire the director, and the director is the person who communicates to the board. Kip, do you want to add anything to what I've said?
I think that is right to the point.
So let me play the role here and ask everybody if they have anything else that they would like to bring up before we let Maureen go. Hearing nothing, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
I think we would like to give a big thank you to Maureen.
That's a lot. Thank you.
I tell you, the experience of working with you over these last several months and to watch how successfully you worked to get a new library director who clearly is exactly the person the community needs to be leading the library. And to watch how you, as a board, have evolved and the board that you are today, I'm really excited. It's going to be great for the community. So it's been a real privilege on my part, and I'll see you next Thursday.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you.
Thanks. Great, thanks.